I now call the February 18, 2020 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:45. Consideration of Claims, Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the claims listed.
Make a motion for consideration of claims to pay the amount of $383,508.31 for a total of $383,508.31.
Have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further business? Tony?
No, Your Honor, we have none.
Thank you. With that said...
Didn't they vote to?
We move to adjourn?
All in favor?
All in favor of adjourned?
No, no, no. All in favor of voting on the bills?
Okay, there we go. All in favor of the bills to be paid?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned?
I now call the February 18, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be given to us by Councilwoman Borders and the invocation by Councilman Larson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in her own right, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve Riverton and to strive to better our lives here as citizens of Riverton. We're thankful for the government, we're thankful for the police that protect us, please watch over and bless them. We're thankful for the citizens that serve and that are willing to be on committees that serve and help each other. Father, please bless them and watch over them. We humbly ask this name thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
We'd like to welcome everybody out tonight. We appreciate you coming. Would the Deputy City Clerk please read the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
And Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Bailey. He will not be here tonight. Councilman Rota will be coming in late. Can I get a motion in that effect?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, the second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare Quorme's present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of Number 11, Board of Appeals' appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Schatz has the motion and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I do need to, to tell you about the Finance Committee?
Hang on just a second.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll pick that up in, in just a minute.
Okay.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any item may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, nobody wants to visit with us tonight? We'll move on to Item 8, the Consent Agenda. Would the Deputy City Clerk please read the Consent Agenda by items only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, February 4, 2020 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, February 18, 2020 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for February 18, 2020. An Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the Month of January 2020.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Now's my cue, Your Honor. The Finance Committee met earlier in consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $383,508.31 for a total of $383,508.31.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion, Councilman Hancock has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The introduction and oath for the, for the new Riverton Police Department Officers and Dispatchers. Captain, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to take a little time and introduce new members of the department. Cheyenne Dever, his wife Kayla, they have two kids and enjoy spending time with his family and being outdoors camping. Ruby Ziegler. Husband Ross, have five kids, several grandchildren. She's born in Springfield, Illinois, raised in East Malloy, Illinois. She has 27 years in corrections and was the warden out here at the Wyoming Honor Farm. She likes, how do you say this, fiber artists, got something to do with alpacas. And likes spending time with family. Logan Alley and his fiancee, Chrissy Kabata. His parents, Mike and Tara Alley, are also present to support him. Logan was born and raised in Riverton, he's graduated from Riverton High School. He has spent a year and a half at the Wyoming Honor Farm as a corrections officer there. He likes working out and being with his fiancee and his dogs. Dispatcher Valerie Hinkle. Husband Chance, they have one kid. She enjoys spending time with family, being outdoors. She was born and raised in Lander but has been living in Riverton for a few years now. Sarah Romero. Her husband is Nick Romero, who's not here at this time. They have several children between the two of them. Sarah was born and raised in Riverton. She looks forward to a career with the Riverton Police Department. And yes, her son will be putting her badge on her tonight.
Fantastic. Thanks, Captain. All come down and give the oath.
Sign three, can I sign four?
Only, only the officers do the whole, so that's...
Just the officers do the oath?
Yeah.
Smile. Thank you. Thank you. I really do appreciate all the people who are here. It's nice to have them on. They're a little short of officers and dispatchers. So I really do appreciate having you here. And it looks like the audience is full. May I tell them to use the officers table?
That's correct.
So if you officers raise your right hand, if you solemnly swear for the firm... I'm supposed to give you the directions, right? You're supposed to follow that. If you solemnly swear on the firm, if you solemnly swear that I will support or obey the plan, that I will support or obey the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
I have not knowingly violated any law.
I have not knowingly violated any law.
Led to my election or appointment.
Led to my election or appointment.
Or caused to be done by others.
Or caused to be done by others.
But I will discharge my duties of my office.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Captain, we appreciate your doing that for us. Now, I hope everybody doesn't get up and leave because that'll make us feel bad.
No.
As you can go.
Oh, that's the best response ever.
See you tomorrow. Yeah.
You want to see a magic trick?
Brendan's anxiety.
That's awesome.
She knows me too well. I'll do what I want.
Seems to be some seats that are better suited. 2021 Liquor License Renewal Application. Would the Deputy City Clerk report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight for your consideration are the liquor license renewal applications that have been submitted for the licensing term April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2021. Annually, each liquor license holder is required to submit a renewal application to the licensing authority, which is the city of Riverton. This year, we received 34 renewal applications. Of those applications, 22 are retail liquor license, 2 are club liquor license, 8 are restaurant liquor license, and 2 are bar and grill liquor license. The renewal fees have generated $41,500 in revenue to the city this year in addition to any sale tax revenues that are generated through the operations of these licenses. Staff began the liquor license renewal process in November of 2019. The process takes approximately three months from the generation of the renewal applications to the final issuance of the license. A lot of time is spent working with both the liquor division and the liquor license applicants themselves. City staff and the Wyoming Liquor Division have certified the applications as complete. All of the license holders are in good standing, their proper fees have been paid, and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Based on this information, staff recommends approval of the 34 liquor license renewal applications as presented.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're glad to welcome Councilman Rota. He is hardworking, he had to get the mail out before he could come. We appreciate him getting that done.
I apologize for my tardiness.
Did, did you get that Reader's Digest check out?
All of them, yes, sir.
The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, Councilwoman Schatz has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing none, the Chair would close that. The Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion, Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license renewal applications of, of April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion and Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We will skip Item 11 and move on to Memorandum of Understanding, MOU with the Veterans Park. City Administrators, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's getting more Spartan.
We're getting down to just the few that really love us now.
Everybody's really excited for this. Your Honor, on approximately November 7 of this last year, the Veterans Park was vandalized and we're, we're all pretty aware of that at this point. Since that time, city staff has been in conversations with Veterans Hall that oversee that park and have, and have improved on that park in an effort to develop a security system that could be implemented that would stop that kind of thing from happening again. And if it couldn't stop it from happening again, then we could better prosecute it. While nothing is foolproof, what we ended up putting together at the request of Veterans Hall was security upgrades to the area that would, would help do exactly that. The MOU you have before you is, allows us to move forward with the ordering and installation of that. What is proposed essentially is that Veterans Hall had, was willing to pay for some upgrades. It was largely at their request that some of this was looked into. So the money for the upgrades that are proposed would come from Veterans Hall. City staff would, specifically our IT staff, would install all of those and we would link them into our monitoring system that's already in place. Then we would continue to monitor those. Ongoing minor maintenance would be more ours. Anything in terms of replacements to those cameras would be, again, with the veterans. And so we would have an ongoing conversation if something went down in five or six years, whether or not to replace that particular item or to modify it and, and move forward that way. You have attached to, to your packet not only a map of the area, which we all know anyway, but also a map of the proposed coverage. So if you look at all of the different fun colors that we like to use, sorry, let me get down to it. You do see a field of view coming from City Hall in this form of a triangle to the right of the picture. That one would be actually attached to City Hall. The other ones would be in the, in the small building, so you could see in both directions that way. You would have a rotating camera on the building as well as a stagnant camera facing right into the, right onto the monuments. At this point, we feel that there's plenty of overlap and IT has done a good job of putting this together as a proposal. At this point, we feel that the MOU is, is satisfactory. It has passed through legal and has been verbally approved by the Veterans Hall. We would ask the council, we would recommend that council approve the MOU as presented and direct staff to execute. We would be happy to answer any questions or provide any details that we can.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the MOU of understanding between the city of Riverton and Veterans Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion and Councilman Rota has the second. Any further discussion? This is a fairly costly, I believe it's over $7,000 camera system that the veterans have been willing to put in and we appreciate their effort. It has really good coverage and I, I hope this will help us eliminate those problems in Veterans Park. So I, I think it's a, a well-conceived concept and, and I look forward to letting that, that process work out. So I appreciate the Veterans Hall for coming in and helping us with that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
You were saying it was rotating, is it a motion-tracking one? Is that what it actually is?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, Councilman, that one is meant to track motion. So it won't, the idea is not to keep it moving all the time, but more so anytime it picks up motion. Now, that one is likely, being fair, the first one to probably experience problems just because it'll have more moving parts, stagnant ones or stationary. Ones tend to be more, have more longevity. That being said, there's still plenty of overlap out there.
Yeah, I think this, I think this will be a, a good answer for our problems and I appreciate everybody involved. I appreciate the IT group have gone out of their way to, to make this work and to, to do a good job of the coverage and the cameras and, and interlocking them into the, are these going into dispatch?
Your Honor, yes, the, they'll be displayed on our dispatch wall. That is addressed, so while we don't monitor every single one of those constantly, it does, we do have a recording of that that allows us to go back. So we would hope that that would address most of our issues.
We do have other cameras in the city that are important to us. We have one in City Park that just rotates and watch City Park for us and we have one down on the rails to trails that can, and come a long ways out and, and pick up motion and, and things that are happening down there. So I guess that's the world we live in. So we appreciate the, the help and, and look forward to using those, keeping ourselves safe. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Get a word for South Federal Drive Reconstruction Project, the city engineers, report, please.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members of the, of the council. I, of course, am not Kyle Butterfield, but I'm happy to report this. I'm Brendan Toman, the engineer for the city of Riverton. I'm Brendan Toman, the engineer for the City of Riverton, and it's a pleasure to be here, and I also appreciate the opportunity to present this bid opening that we had for the South Summit project. I have a few notes that'll be a little different than what you have in your packet, but I'll go through a couple of things, and I do promise it will be short. So we did have a bid opening last Thursday for the South Summit project. It's the first of five projects that we've planned to bid out for the upcoming 2020 construction season. These projects will be funded with one percent monies directed by the Fix Our Road Citizens Committee. The South Summit is one of the five poorest roads in the City of Riverton. This is based on a pavement condition index score. The score of South Summit is thirty-three, the PCI index equals thirty-three for that, out of a hundred possible points. Excuse me, two of the other five projects are to be addressed in the upcoming immediate years, two of those five projects that are in poor condition. It was our goal to put the South Summit project out to bid early this year in order to help the contractors schedule the project and then procure competitive bids. The project was advertised for bidding Thursday, January thirtieth. A pre-bid conference was held, and bids were open again last Thursday, February thirteenth. Happy to, happy to record the results. The top bidder was Seventy-One Construction Incorporated with a bid of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Alexander Excavation in Lander was the second high bidder with one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. And Dave's Asphalt Company came in as the third bidder on this project for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. There were three total bidders on the project, they were all deemed responsive. The injures estimate on this project was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty. This is approximately thirty percent over what the lowest bid came in at, or seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars over the lowest bid. So we do have the funds for this project. The bid, if this bid is awarded, the funds will still have roughly two million, two hundred thousand with a little bit of change in there left. That will accomplish hopefully the other four projects that we have planned for this year. The staff does recommend to award this project to Seventy-One Construction in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and no change. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the council.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to award the bid of the South Summit Drive project to Seventy-One Construction, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? I was at the FAST meeting when we discussed this, and I appreciate your efforts and the hard work that you put into it. There will be some curb and sidewalk reconstruction around those utility areas, but most of it's asphalt.
Correct, correct, Your Honor.
Super, thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just was curious, do we have any, I've just noticed that now that a lot of the snow is off, been seeing a lot of the potholes that have been sitting. Can you comment on any, I guess, any places where we're going to be doing just patchwork this spring and summer? Are you aware of any? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I am trying to put you on the spot, but if you don't know, that's okay.
Your Honor, I really am not the best source for that. Kyle would be with his crew, the streets crew, Dale. We are, we are trying to address a lot of the projects that do need the media attention right away, and that's why I wanted to bring up that PCI index score. The force committee also looks at projects that are handled as far as the amount of travel on those projects. So you notice some roads that are very poor around town are getting addressed just yet, but they don't have the traffic. East Sunset will be a project that hopefully, excuse me, not hopefully, we will be working on that next, and I started yesterday putting the plans together to get that out as well. So, excuse me for my raspy voice.
We do, we do keep a list of those potholes, and as soon as the snow and ice gets out of them, it's pretty difficult to repair them now. But if the citizenry have an idea of a pothole that they think's gone unattended, if you could give us a call, either at City Hall or myself.
Your Honor.
We'll put you on that list.
They can also go to our new city website and report it there, too.
That's right. And that's the easy way to do it for all you high-tech guys. George and I'll just use our phone, and that's almost too hard for us, so. But we do, we do appreciate the help we get from the citizens to point those out to us that doesn't anger anybody, but we really can't do a whole lot until they dry up and we get the ice out. So we'll look forward to that. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel.
Airport real estate listing addendum. City administrators report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. During the January seventh discussion pertaining to the extension of the existing real estate contract, the discussion turned towards how council may promote the sale of the listed lots that we've been working with up at the Airport Industrial Park. The result of this conversation is the proposed addendum that you have before you. What this, what this does is adjust the listing prices for the lots located at the Airport Industrial Park in an effort to maybe spur that on a little bit. Those prices are listed and provided for you within your packet, so I won't belabor council's time. But the important thing, I think, to point out is that, like any real estate transaction, a lot of this is subject to other factors that come into play at the time of sale, specifically appraisals. But council, when council gets rid of property, and we've seen this a little bit already, we have to follow state statute. Now, some of this is taken care of a little bit in the listing, but ultimately, if something is for economic development, then council has more options and can go directly with that seller. So at the time of sale, if it's for an economic development item, i.e. a new business that's going to be growing there, that's one conversation per state statute. The other one is if someone just wants to buy the lot and sit on it and have it in holding, well, then we actually have to go through the normal process, even though we're listing it, is our understanding. That would just be accepting bids for the process, for the bids for the property. If that were to happen, the likelihood of bidding wars at this point on this property is very unlikely, but it could always happen. But you can accept bids for that property at that time, so that would be another step. We're understanding of it, and we know what we need to do. Hopefully, this will help spur that development, and it does help towards our council goals of promoting economic development within our community. At this point, we do recommend that council approve the agreement as presented, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the addendum to the real estate listing contract.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilman Hancock. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
George, what's, what is our, what has been the inquiry on those properties since you've had them for listing?
Hey, George Piplica Home Source Realty, Your Honor. Part of this addendum came from our last renewal, and we looked at that listing, and part of the problems with that listing all along has been those lots have not been priced. They were put out as a square footage basis on other city lots that it sold. So when you're trying to market that up against properties on all the different websites, your property price actually shows zero. And then it says you need to contact us to explain how you're going to process, pretty easy just to skip over that lot. So it was the mayor that actually asked us in the last renewal, is there something we could do to put the pricing on these lots? And as Tony explained, we concur that under public development, you've got one policy, and under, if I just wanted to buy a lot myself to hold or build my own toy shop on one day, then it's going to have to have an appraise value and meet your statutes in order for that to be sold. But a buyer understanding that, I think we'll follow through with the process. Our difficulty in the past has been going up there going, we really can't tell you the price. You kind of, fifty-seven cents a square foot based on this one versus this one, and if you want to make the city an offer, then they have to tell you yes or no to that, and then we have to get it appraised, and then we have to tell you if we can get a council approval, and tell you if we can sell you the lot. Wouldn't you just buy a lot publicly held by somebody else much easier? And that's part of what's happened. So this move is to, one, to truly make our job much easier, and, two, give a lot more opportunity for the city to have the land that they're desiring to move in a competitive marketplace where it's priced against other properties in an equal opportunity.
So the exposure is going to be better?
Far better, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, has anybody inquired on pricing or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, you've.
You have gotten inquiries.
Most of that is from local interest, the exception that was like FedEx when that was done. But most of that's been local then, because that's the only parties that are actually driving around. You know, we're a proponent of brochures on signs and finding instant access, kind of old-fashioned in a sense, but it still works for us. But you couldn't put a brochure, you can't put anything out there, because then you've got no price. So then you get the call that says, how come this doesn't tell me how much it is? And then you got to go through the whole, this is going to help us with that, where we can do that. We also want to put a display inside the airport, and we've talked to Tony about that, where we can now actually put those lots and happy to buy a billboard space or whatever in there to where, now that there's a confé and there's a reason to stand up there and talk and no reason to be social, there's also going to be an availability, hopefully, to put a marketing tool out there that, again, gives conversation of that land.
You mean people didn't just go hang out at the FedEx or anything like that, or?
Yeah.
DCI building?
Yeah.
I go to the DCI building.
You go to the DCI building. Building I prefer to stay away from.
I guess procedurally, if somebody comes and they say, we want to buy the property for, oh, I don't know, the lot one for a hundred thousand, would we still have to, if it's not economic development and it's not low-cost housing, we'd still have to say basically, we're interested in that, but we're going to have to put it out to bid, and you would be among the bidders then? Is that kind of how the procedure would work then?
Your Honor, essentially, yes. That is our understanding.
But at least this way we can get it listed there, and we can say, we're willing to sell it for this price. Okay.
And at that point, then, there may have to be, depending on their use, whether we have a meeting here and you announce there's going to be bids out for this parcel of land, and. Well, I somewhat did that with the city, the little lot across from the Ranger here a year or so ago, remembering what kind of fault they followed, that we were involved in that, but that was where that had to have opportunity for other parties to make a bid, because that was individual interest and not public interest for development. Kind of the same standard.
And the problem for most developers is they, they don't want to go into negotiation, they just want to know what the price is and start at that, and that they don't mind negotiating after that, but they don't want to negotiate from zero.
And they do not like somebody else to know what their offer is, which goes against what we do every day, but it's a little different because you're the city.
I appreciate you hearing and doing that for us.
No, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passed. Development agreement for the Habitat for Humanity. Would the community directors report, please? Eric, you're well.
I am well.
I got a message from somebody that I thought you were out, but he's in. It's the others.
It's Eric Murphy, probably.
I'm glad you're well.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Before you this evening for your consideration is a development agreement between the City of Riverton and Habitat for Humanity Wind River Country Incorporated. Habitat for Humanity was gifted four lots within the College Hill Development along Eagle Drive due west of the College Hill Apartments. The group has constructed one home on the southernmost lot, however, to date, they haven't received any qualified applicants and meet the requirements of their program, and now they're seeking to sell the home on the open market. They would also like to sell the remaining three undeveloped lots as well, with the plan of using the capital from the sale to purchase another property somewhere else to construct one home. We received their signed copy of the development agreement back, actually, today, and from their board of directors, and now we're recommending approval for signature at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the proposed development agreement with Habitat for Humanity Wind River Country INC.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz, and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? This property finds itself in a really tough economic situation, and so that this is what they've decided that they need to do, so I don't think we have much of a choice but to move forward with it, so I would encourage that. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. The inter-local memorandum of understanding, MOU, city assistance without fitting thermopolis patrol car. City administrators report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Employees of our fleet division within Public Works have developed the skills and experience necessary to, we call it upfitting, it's sometimes called outfitting, we'll use them interchangeably. Upfitting or outfitting the emergency vehicles, not only that we use, but it came to the attention of other communities, do we have the ability to do the same? That's kind of a process. Sometimes you got to send those out for a while, and they can be gone a while. So we execute MOUs with other organizations for assistance on a regular basis. We've executed them with other communities for demolition items, we've, different things happen all the time. What you have before you is more of a formal way that we can make an agreement between the communities, so the expectations are set up, and we can address liability issues as emergency vehicles do sometimes carry liability. Essentially, what you have before you in this MOU denotes that the city will be reimbursed for all personnel and ancillary costs related to the upfitting of the vehicles. The requesting entity is responsible to purchase and deliver upfitting equipment and vehicles to the city. The city will prioritize its own fleet maintenance responsibilities over any third-party upfitting, so our stuff has to come first. The city does not make any warranty about the vehicles, we're not insuring them, we're not guaranteeing that. And finally, that the requesting entity does indemnify the city with regard to anything that might happen with that. These are just some of those steps that we commonly find ourselves having to take. We're happy to promote this as it allows us to work well with our other communities, and those relationships are highly beneficial to us. At this point, we do recommend approval of the, not only this MOU, but the format, so we can use those on an ongoing basis with other communities should it arise. We don't necessarily have to bring those back every single time. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding relating to the upfitting emergency response vehicles for other entities, and give the public work directors signatory, signatorial authority.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Schatz has a second. Any further discussion? I went down, and Captain can help and correct me if I get this wrong, but when you purchase a police car, it comes, the engine and transmission and things are all kind of special. The price is pretty reasonable. I think their last one's around fifty-six or something, the ones that we bought, but they have a special undercarriage and a special motor train, but from there on out, it comes kind of stripped. And our guys do a really good job, and they have a good process, and I went down and saw that, and they had to put in a whole new wiring harness in, put all the radios in, peel back the carpets. There's no backseat, they put a special backseat in that is a fiberglass seat, it's not comfortable at all. It's cupped, so. in that is a fiberglass seat, it's not comfortable at all, it's, um, cupped, so, um, it has its, its duty to perform, and, um, and then they put in the cage in to protect the officers. Anything else I'm missing? Lights and, they're, all, all the exterior lights are all wired through the system to, to come back onto the console, and outside speakers, so our guys do a really good job, and, and I would like to commend them to just the fact of being kind enough to do that for Thermopolis. It's not easy at their size and population to, to find that expertise, so thanks a lot. Appreciate it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Uh, we're down to seventeen, the council committee reports, and, uh, council members' roundtable. Councilman Hancock, would you like to start us off?
Sure, Your Honor. We had a meeting on the sixth for the rec board, uh, considered all of the different requests for funding. Um, I wrote down the amount correctly, which I'm pretty sure I did. We approved one hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents towards, uh, various organizations around the community. We spent some time discussing that, uh, it's very frustrating to buy soccer balls every year. You, you were there last year, I think the same thing was probably complained about. But, and, and we get it, we get that there's kids and everything, and that's what happens, but it, there was just some grousing about that they've probably purchased enough, uh, soccer goals to, uh, outfit every single kid here probably at some point in their lives. We were contemplating maybe going into business to, uh, to build them and then sell them. Anyway, that's just a little bit of levity, but, um, there's a lot of great organizations out there, very deserving. Um, I think it's amazing that there's so many people out there trying to, um, better the community, trying to do things to help the kids in the community. Um, and I just want to say that I was very impressed with the number of organizations that go and they ask for money, and they use it for what they should be using it for. Um, so that, that was good. We also had some beautification considerations. I think we're still going to be considering other applications for beautification projects. Um, so that, that's going to be good. We had one in particular that was trying to get rid of goat heads, and I was like, yes, more people would like to do that. I'm sure that somebody could find some money, because as somebody who's ridden a bike around this town from a young age, they're always a problem. And George knows, because there's a ton of them right near your house. Nothing against your house, George, I'm just saying that alley there, you do not, anybody, anybody that knows this town is like, you do not go anywhere in that area on a bike.
George probably seeded those, didn't you, George?
Probably did. It's one of those things to get, keep kids off his lawn, like, make it hard to come through with a bike. Um, so that was, uh, our meeting there. We also had a solutions committee meeting. Uh, I'll let Carla talk about that. Um, but that's all I have to report today.
Thank you. Carla?
Well, as Tim alluded, we, uh, we had the solutions committee last week, and, uh, it was well-attended. Um, we're still talking about the residential treatment facility. I think things have kind of slowed down on that front. Um, I think there were some other priorities that the jail was dealing with at, at this time, so, um, but we got a good report from Michelle Woodmire with Eagles Hope, they, um, they accepted the assets from the Fremont County Goods Samaritan Center, and they're planning on putting in a Phase One facility, so, um, it'll, it'll be immediate help. Um, I think they're thinking about opening somewhere in May is their target. Um, that's about it for that, and then I've got a couple of other items. Um, the Food Hub that I've been working with, um, they've changed their hours, uh, they're open from nine to three. Let's see, what is it? Thursday through Monday, they're closed on Tuesday and Wednesday. Also, another exciting thing they're doing is, uh, they've, they got together with, um, Makerspace, and they've made a counter that they can take into the secure area at the airport, so while people are waiting there, once they've cleared security, they can actually grab a sandwich or a drink or something like that, so they're excited to have that going. Uh, what was the other thing I was going to talk about?
Don't they have an organizational meeting that you posted that was Friday? Was that?
Yeah, um, yeah, good, that's a good idea. Um, okay, so they're going to have an egg-grading class on Wednesday this week. It's a, it's a full-day thing down at the fairgrounds, and what the goal is, is to try to get vendors, um, to get their eggs into local restaurants, schools, things like that. So in order to do that, they have to be graded, so there's five people, not sure who they are, I know Jack's one of them, and they're going to be taking that egg-grading class, so they'll be able to grade the eggs. Um, we're still kind of hoping maybe an FFA chapter or something would step up and, and offer to do that as a project. Um, but that, that will be really nice. And then on Friday, the twenty-first, they're having an organizational meeting, just trying to get some farmers, local producers, uh, together to try to make a game plan and, and figure out how they're going to get those eggs done, and I know there's several vendors that have already said they would take a lot of eggs, so it's pretty exciting that we can have our local eggs here in the community. Um, so that organizational meeting, I think, starts at six PM at the airport.
Six to eight, wasn't it?
Uh, six to eight.
And can just anybody attend that?
Anyone that's interested, uh, vendors, consumers, producers, it's meant for everybody, so we're hoping to have a good turnout for that.
Fabulous.
And with that, I think that's it.
Super. Corey?
Uh, Mayor, well, I don't have a whole bunch. Um, I wasn't able to make it to the rec board meeting, but it sounds like that went pretty well, and of course, I missed the finance committee, I apologize. Um, I did just want to, uh, mention the jackalope jump, which was held out front last Saturday, was a great turnout, the sun came out in just in time, so the water was still cold. Um, I don't think they changed that. Um, and then the Men Who Cook was a huge success. Um, I think they raised enough to, um, give three hundred and eighty kids, three hundred and eighty-three, I think, to be exact, eighty kids books, um, and that's from ages zero to five, uh, through the Dolly Parton's, uh, reading program. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention, I had a gal approach me today, and she has a group of volunteers that are looking to help out with some, um, local projects, and she told me about this website, it's called comserve.org, and, um, I've just messed around with it a little bit, so I'm not exactly sure how to navigate it completely, but they have a local group that is taking on, uh, volunteer work, and you can actually go onto this website and put in any requests you might have for volunteer work. Um, so again, there's a group here in Riverton and Shoshone, um, if you go to comserve.org and you've got some project that you're looking for volunteers, any kind of assistance like that, uh, that, that's a great place to do it, and she said she's got some pretty motivated, uh, volunteers, so I would encourage everybody to take a look into that. Uh, with that being said, that is all that I have at the moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Can you tell us about, uh, Men That Cooks? We had, um, Eric, you cooked, did you not?
He did. And it was
I was at the basketball game, I apologize, but, uh, I didn't get there. I did see pictures of Tony at the table, and so Tony knew where
A lot of good food, that was I seen Tim as well, but I think when he seen me, he kind of turned and ran, which I don't blame him.
No, I was going to come up and talk to you, but when they start talking and doing the auction and stuff, it just gets so loud, I'm like
Yeah, yeah. It, it was really well-attended, there was, um, I couldn't tell you how many people attended, but I think every seat was filled. I think they said there was one less cooked this year. Um, there was still plenty of food to pick at.
And one of our officers did some, did some wings, didn't he?
Yes, Jay, uh
Mr. Nation.
Yeah, Mr. Nation did, um, hot wings, and they were good. He actually, they, he went through them pretty quick.
They were so good, I didn't
They were, they were really good.
They were gone when I got there.
Somebody should have brought it to you.
Yeah.
Just don't think of the DJ, do they, Corey?
Eric made sure to take care of me, and, um, if you ever get a chance, try those sauces he makes, they should be in the store, just saying.
His stuff should be really good, because he researches his tacos all year long. That's, that's a good job. Thanks for doing those things, we appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Kyle?
Uh, Your Honor, um, there was a conflict, uh, Tim, I called Tim, and he sat in for me on the solutions committee, thank you, Tim, and, uh, I went to the Manita Divide meeting that was held at the Sundowner, and, uh, um, I really feel that we have to get a hold of somebody at the state-level government, and, uh, we have a beautiful airport, we've got land for sale, we've got homes that are wanting vague people to attend them, and we have a committee at the state of Wyoming that is arbitrarily and capriciously changing the goal line on the Manita Divide. Um, and, uh, I realize that the town of Thermopolis feels threatened by the amount of, and they claimed in the Riverton Ranger, uh, wastewater, but it was more like a pollutant, and unfortunately, it's a naturally occurring mineral, sodium sulfate, there is no way of getting it out of the water, reverse osmosis won't work for it. And for them, if they were putting some detrimental chemical into it in their process, then I can, I can see that the DEQ has reason to constrict the production there, but they don't. It's, uh, sodium sulfate and sodium chloride, which are naturally occurring. They're fifty-six miles away from Boise, and I doubt, I looked at all of their records and, and I could not find one where they took a sample of the water entering Boise to get an analysis.
Right.
And, uh, you know, uh, I ran a chemical company for ten years, and, uh, there's some validity there that they're just not acting fair on, so I, uh, anyway, I only wrote fifteen letters to the DEQ and submitted them, and yes, I got notification back that they'd received them. Um, the second thing is, it was really kind of interesting on the finance committee, I went over it, and, uh, I saw that our jail bill was only seventy-six dollars to, um, Fremont County, and I thought, yippee skippy! Uh, but then I went down further, and we only paid Washeki fifty-four hundred, eleven dollars, so, you know, obviously, when your, your hotel's full, you gotta put them somewhere else. But when they're somewhere else, maybe there's not a lot of visitors, and vacation isn't as good as it should be, so I commend, uh, our people in charge of putting the people in a proper timeout box is good. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. In answer to some of your questions, I think they're, they're valid, and I'll jump in right here. We did, Tony and I and Mayor Highsmith and Mayor Powell from, uh, Mayor Highsmith is from Shoshone, and Mayor Powell is from, uh, Casper, did go down on the third of December and had a meeting with the governor, and we spoke very pointedly of, of the Manita Divide problem, and since then, it's only taken a turn for the worst, and, um, the govern, the governor is not at that time nor previous time in support of what we're doing there, so, uh, we have tried to, to that, we have another, we have another idea working, and we'll, we're, we're going to go forward with that, and I, I have great hope for that, I don't know that I, that it will work, but we are, we are working on that.
Thank you.
I attended that same meeting that you were at. Next time we have somebody suggest that, why don't we make sure that we open the, the doors to this building and, and make sure that we have that meeting here instead of interrupt the Sundowner's dinner schedule, so, uh, Kevin, I appreciate Kevin and ID Inc. putting that work together.
It was good.
And, uh, and even, um, um, you know, the, the company sent people to, to explain the process. It is a, it is a chemical that, that they deemed harmful, and yet it's not on the EPA's list of, of chemicals that they govern, and so, um, it is, it is capricious, and we, we need to push on that. It's, it's not just the Manita Divide, it's, if we let this go, it'll be other, uh, oil and mineral, uh, closures, and, and to be real truthful, we're not getting a lot done on the west side of the state in that. What was the other item that you brought up that I?
Oh, the, the, the jail.
Oh.
Washeki.
We do, we do appreciate the work that's there, we went and took a jail tour, the jail's awfully full, Tony went with me, uh, Chief Murphy was with us, the sheriff showed us through. Um, I know that the prosecutors are doing their very best on their side of that, uh, we're all trying to help. We were, we were fortunate to sign an agreement with Washeki County, um, in Worland, they take our prisoners, they're not as, they're not as trained as Fremont County, uh, jail system is with the, with that, and so we have had a learning curve that's cost us some money, but, um, the overnight stay in, in Worland is only fifty-five dollars a night compared
Fifty?
Fifty dollars a night compared to seventy-five dollars in, in county, and so we do save a little bit of money there until we start, our, our prisoners are pretty smart, and they start thinking of ways to spend our money, so, um, we do appreciate everybody from Mia's side of that. Mia works hard with the, the court system and our, our municipal judge, she's doing everything she can. We have six beds up in Worland, and I do believe, last count I had was that we had four, and we were sending, so I'm, are we full? We got all six beds full, do you know? So maybe I need to get on the phone and find, I've had discussions with Cody, and we might have to find other municipalities that have space. Is that the way you understand that, Mia?
Yes, I understand that all six beds are full in Washeki County.
Thank you. Um, so we're, we're trying everything we can try, but we do appreciate the opportunity to discuss it. Rebecca?
Sure, Your Honor. Actually, I don't have much, uh, today. Um, I just want to say, uh, last weekend, this was the one before that, um, I went out to, and volunteered at the ice races at Boise Reservoir that Casey Bailey's putting on, so, um, it's just one more thing to do around this time of the year in Fremont County that's normally not much going on, so even if you're just going out there to be a spectator, it's, it's worth the, the trip out there to watch those guys have a good time. I even rolled my four-wheeler over, so that was entertaining for anybody that could watch it. No, I didn't even, I didn't get hurt, but, um, there's always something fun to see out there, so, but that's really all I have, Your Honor.
Do you have dates?
Um, yeah, they're doing it every other weekend, so they're doing it this weekend, Friday and Saturday, or sorry, Saturday and Sunday. Um, registration begins around nine o'clock and, well, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, and then we should be able to start racing at ten o'clock, there's also pre-registration. If you go on Facebook to Boise Ice Races, you'll be able to look up the online registration and get yourself registered ahead of time. And they have all kinds of divisions, they have, uh, like little tiny kid races on their little electric cars, all the way up to, um, you know, grown men on their, on their dirt bikes, so, um, four-wheelers, side-by-sides, dirt bikes, little cars, everything.
Probably the kids are safer than the, the old men.
Well, I don't know about that. It was the women's race, that was the
You rolled over?
Yes.
I hope you guys aren't polluting Boise. There'll be something to say.
You're going to ruin it for us, Mayor.
City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, as we were talking about the Athon Project, uh, previously, the city, so everyone knows, we did it, submit, um, our comments, we've been a participating agency with that product, with that overall process. Uh, so we did submit comments, uh, similar to what you've heard here this evening, um, and we will continue to submit comments as appropriate And we will continue to submit comments as appropriate and attend the meetings as appropriate. You'll notice that we're continuing with snow removal. Crews have been working, clearing rows again and again. So we're continuing to work on that. We appreciate everybody's patience as we work through that. And we're really appreciative of the staff that are taking care of that. We do have an Airport Board meeting this Friday, if anybody's interested in attending. RECDA will be on the 26th at 7:00 AM at the Sundowner. The mayor and I will attend WAM next week. If anybody has legislative items or information to convey to our representatives down there, we'll be happy to carry it. Or there, actually, we have a great group of people that always answer the phone, so they've been very helpful. If anybody's had a chance, some of those items, like House Bill 47 and the like, are moving ahead nicely. So we're happy to hear some of those, and we're continuing to monitor. As a reminder, Council Goal Setting Session will be on the second meeting in March. While we don't have a work session this month, we do have one in March. Again, and there'll be also one in April, which I will get to. We today advertised for the Contracts for Services as part of the overall budget process. Our Contracts for Services application process is that one sitting where council gets to listen to all of the different applications. So that process is now open. You can go to our website and get those application items. We will be advertising it on our website. I believe we're going to do it about three times, but you can always get it there. You can, I'm sorry, through Facebook, we'll be advertising it. You can get all of the forms on our website. So we encourage anybody who's seeking funding at that point to take part of that process, because that's what we build into the budget, so we know that it's there. We know that we've allocated those funds. That way, we don't have that, we've set the budget and now, three months later, we have it here and we have it here. The deadline for that is Wednesday, April 1st, will be the deadline for those applications. We will not accept after that without significantly extenuating circumstances. Those do happen. And then, again, April Work Session. We did mention, and then finally, we did mention a little bit the website. We will once again encourage individuals to use it as a source of information. We look to put that information out more and more. And we appreciate everybody who does use it, and especially Megan and the rest of the team that make it run for us really well. Your Honor, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Tony brings up a good thing that I keep forgetting. Mia, you sent me all of those, and they hit my iPad, and I couldn't open them. And I should have got a 13-year-old to help me, but I got Tony. And Tony got them to the right places, but I don't know where to find them. So could you send me at your convenience the times of those again, so I can go find them in my calendar? They're in my calendar. We can go find them, but I want to make sure that I can attend those meetings.
Your Honor, are these your budget meeting notifications?
Yeah. And you haven't heard back from me on that, because I.
I did hear back from you.
Well, it was, you heard back from my iPad. My iPad knows when they are. It's me that doesn't know when they are.
I'll resend them.
Would you please? You know, we have some wonderful things happening in Riverton. And when we read the Weekly this week, we picked up over 800 truckloads of snow off the roads. And we, if you want to see something that's impressive, go up Pershing and as you get almost to the intersection of Eighth Street, if you look towards the Jackson School, you'll see the snow deposited on that lot. And we really do appreciate the school district for letting us use their lot and the lot behind the new Willow Creek School. We're stacking snow there also. They were out hardworking today, picking up the balance of Main Street down to the downtown section. And, you know, if you didn't know any better, it looks pretty bare. Looks like we didn't have a snowstorm. So I would commend the roads crew have done a wonderful job with that. And 800 loads of anything is a bunch, and those are all 20-yard trucks that are picking that up. And we've adapted some yard waste units to do that. And, you know, if you get a minute, stop and watch that blade and that blower and those truck drivers do their work, it's almost a waltz. And so we really do appreciate it. I don't give Tony enough credit. We are in the midst, and when Kyle brings that up, we are in the Manita Divide. We're neck-deep in trying to help there. And thank goodness for Tony. We sit on that advisory panel, and his response was outstanding. And then he's kind enough to put my name at the bottom of it, so people think I can spell those big words. I really can't. Tony does a great job. So we aren't just sitting on our hands. We're doing our very best to move the economics along in Fremont County. And to be real frank, that's, Mayor Powell is in the room because he feels the same way. He would like jobs for Casper. And we need those jobs in Wyoming. Every once in a while, we get this romantic dream that we don't need to extract minerals in Wyoming. And that's a great dream if you like fishing and you have a job that doesn't need any other support. But the extraction industry is the part of Wyoming that makes a turn, funds our schools, funds everything that we do. And lots of times, we lose track of that. And if we had to take the tax base off of that industry and carry ourselves, we would be overwhelmed with the cost.
Your Honor.
Yes.
An example of what you're talking about is Pinedale, Wyoming. Before they had that oil, that natural gas strike, they were a small little town. Now, with the amount of natural gas coming out of Pinedale, they are the largest producer of petroleum in Wyoming. And that fuels that whole system. And for people from other areas to think that we're not an extractive industry, they're just extremely short on knowledge.
Yep. Well, and you know, that coal shovel that's been idled in Gillette has greatly caused our shortfall in the state budget. And, you know, $450 million shortfall is extremely difficult to make up with coffee and cupcakes and beds and lodging. And so when you stop and think about that, I would hope people would center themselves on the fact that we need those jobs. We need those people. We need work in Wyoming. So we're all trying to do our very best, and we wish them the best. General Reiner came to Riverton in this room, and he is the head of YDOT, the road division and the aeronautics division. And he's trying to help us work with the WRTA bus system and keep it afloat and keep the money flowing. It's a federally funded project. If you don't know how that works, the federal government supplies those funds to about 80%, and then the WRTA has to go out and make charters and try to raise that other money. And so it's hard to keep that all separate. Gary Misham, the director of that, pointed out to me that that report has, and you won't believe this, but this is the right number, 28,000 lines of entry on it. Isn't that what he told us, Tony, in that meeting?
Yes, Your Honor, I think that sounds right.
And that's only a reflection of government. Only government could do something so wise. And so we appreciated the general traveling all the way through a snowstorm. He didn't get to use the state jet. He drove down, and he brought three staff members with him. The week before that, he didn't come, but he sent five staff members to help us. So I know that they're doing everything they can to help us with that. I appreciate it. I'd like to thank them. I did attend a hospital meeting. Tim was there with me, and the hospital is moving forward, and they're doing their very best to get that information and their financing put together. The last CWC home game is tomorrow night, and the girls start at 5:30 and the boys at 7:30. And it'll be fun to, if they win, I think we may get a playoff game. So we might get one more playoff game. I'd like to thank, this is just a personal thing for me. I come in on Monday evenings to try to give people an opportunity to come into my office and tell me things where we can improve. And, you know, I get a lot of phone calls and I get a lot of conversations, and I don't mind those. I really do appreciate them, because if we don't know what you don't like, we can't fix it. And we can keep telling ourselves that we're doing everything great. But when the citizens come in and talk to me, and Jim Gores in the room, he was the latest, not the latest, but one of the latest ones that came in and showed me some things that we could do different. And I appreciate those people, and I appreciate it, and I would encourage people to do that at their convenience. The Solutions Committee does a great job. I attended that also. And I also attended the Force Committee meeting. Councilman Bailey wasn't able to make that. Kyle, I said I'd take over the solid waste meeting, and you told me, was it the third Monday of the month?
It's, yes, it is, but it's coming up, and it's tomorrow, on Wednesday at 10:00.
Wednesday at 10:00?
Yeah. And you can go to Trash Masters' website there and download an agenda.
Is the meeting in Lander?
It is. At the way, you drive over to the animal hospital, instead of going to it, you go up the hill.
To the?
Right.
The garbage dump?
To the garbage dump, right. And Highsmith will be there.
10:00 tomorrow?
Yeah. Trash Matters, right? Not Trash Masters?
Trash Matters. No, it's Trash Ma, anyway. And it's at 10:00. No, 9:30.
I say, I think I.
9:30. 9:30.
Okay, 9:30 AM, right?
Right.
I did refer to ID Inc., and I was really tickled with them to put that public meeting on where people could come and get a petition to sign for the Manita Divide. And that's what's really happening to us. We're getting more out-of-state letters, and they're better organized, and they're flooding our system with comments that are negative. And we need to pay attention to that. The last thing that happened is Rose Salamanca with the US DOJ called me again. And I was really encouraged with this. We'd been talking that we've gone to their meetings, and it always seems like we're just the target. And she's offered us an opportunity to maybe host that next meeting and explain our side of policing and what causes us to have to police. And we'll take hold of that and we'll do a good job with that. And we'll get that information out. And so I appreciate her efforts to help us with that. With that said, I don't, anybody else have any comments that they'd like to throw in? Staff, you good?
I believe we're good, Your Honor.
Everybody's thumbs up. Unless there's, if there's no objection, we stand adjourned at 8:17.